I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Baker.
Present.
DeRoche.
Here.
Palmer. Seabrooks, here. Thompson.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
I'd like to welcome our city, new city clerk, old city clerk back joining us tonight.
Just because she turned forty, you know, leave me alone.
The old city clerk. Wish her her happy birthday yesterday, so Ash, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us again. First, we'd like to call up Chief Cross. Do you want to step in the room for a minute? We've had a new officer that's been sworn in, and he's got his FTO here. Jeff, if you'd like to introduce your man.
This is Officer Robert Turner. He graduated the county Thursday. And he started the street yesterday with his PTO, White Roseville. And Robert lives in Etown. We're glad to have him on board. He's going to do a great job for us. Councilman Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
City Attorney Mark Pike.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Good to see you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Seabrooks.
Kim Thomas.
Appreciate it. Glad you had a great time.
Made it easy.
You don't seem like it's been that long, though.
Oh, man, it's been a long time.
Now, you remember everybody's faces up here in case you stop gates, so just go ahead.
That's Yates, right there.
There you go.
There you go.
He's our new officer.
He's our new, just got out of academy. Actually, if you'll put in the minutes that Councilman Palmer supported the mayor's increase in pay. Supported my increase in pay, go ahead. Note that in the minutes. If you'll put in the minutes, though, that Councilman Palmer is present, please. All right, with that, we'll start. Thank you all. Y'all be safe out there. Appreciate y'all. Appreciate you guys. Thank you. See ya. Chance, you want to come up for the tax first on our work session agenda? Let me start off. I know we had a public hearing scheduled tonight for the Tiff District, but that has been moved and rescheduled for next week. That'll be August twentieth. And that was shared in our news enterprise as well as our local paper. And we'll have that public hearing next week, so. But moving on with the work session item, we have the property tax rate for 2019. You all should have a copy of that in your folder. Chance has broken down what that assessment would look like, and then gave us a history of the years past. And so that, keeping in mind that that is not proposed in the current budget. So any additional revenue or increase would just be an add-on to the current budget that was recently approved. So, anybody having questions for Chance? Any suggestions or comments about what the rate, where you want to keep the rate?
If we keep the rate the same, it's about, about a $2,000 increase once you take in the decrease for the homestead exemption.
Did you already take that into account?
Well, the homesteads, you know, you never really know what the homesteads are going to be until you get the tax roll. So obviously, the homesteads, you can see the figures, the difference there of the almost five million, maybe four, give or take, five million of homesteads was on the tax roll more than last year. So, you know, when you multiply that assessment by the tax rate, obviously, there's going to be some funds there that the city won't receive as a result of taxpayers that became age-eligible for the exemption. But basically, the revenue, the assessments were minor, for the most part. There was only about six million or seven million in taxable real estate, which is kind of a, kind of a small increase based on other years. Some years are a lot more. And when there's a larger increase in your assessments, typically, that will drive the rates down. But with the marginal increase that we had, that's the reason why the rate was computed at the same as last year. So as far as budgeting goes, you know, we always budget a little bit more in taxes because there's typical, there's always reassessments by PVA as deeds get recorded and properties sell at a higher rate. And we always get the benefit of that. But there's nothing budgeted as a result of any sort of tax increase unless that's something that the council won't choose to do.
Right.
Any other questions? Any suggestions for next week's meeting or to adopt the rate?
I'm totally for leaving it as it is.
We would just propose, and obviously, the council can decide that night, you know, but we have to propose something for your packet, so I would just prepare probably something as computed. And if the council wants to consider, of course, they can always do that.
So, good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, the next is, Chance, you want to stay there, is the budget ordinance amendment for the 2018-2019. Chance, you want to go over it real quick?
Yeah, so two of the departments, as you all probably saw in my summary. The summary's kind of detailed because I broke out some of the specific line items in the two departments, which was admin and recreation. Recreation, the proposed budget had 712,000. And as a result of the expenditures that came through at year's end, June thirtieth, at 737, you know, there's about a $25,000 increase, which really is very minor on a percentage basis when you consider, you know, a full year of activity. And the only other department that had an overage was admin department. But originally budgeted at 890,000 and came in at 979. There were some line item changes, and, you know, I gave you a summary that shows the $89,100 of changes and which line items that were affected. The biggest one of those, which was brought up, I guess, at some point over the last eighteen months, was the lot development expenses over there near Boundary Oak and that whole corridor.
The Red Hill Cutlery installation.
Right.
So those were obviously at the time when that was first proposed. You know, there was no funds budgeted for that. And as a result, admin was the placeholder for those expenses. So that's why there was the majority of that was, the reason was for that line item.
Was that offset by something else?
There was, no, there was no offset. I mean, that was just, I think it was a case where the council.
No, I'm saying where the increases offset.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. On the revenue side, yeah. Obviously, we could have chosen insurance tax, which is what I chose to offset that with. We could have chosen occupational tax because both of those line items came in significantly higher than what was budgeted. So it's not a case where we're using reserve funds to help offset those two departments. Frankly, we could have, we could have covered those offsets by savings in the police and fire.
I saw it. I just wanted to make it.
Yeah.
Put a purpose of that right here.
Yep.
Yeah, and that was the other thing, and that's what we budgeted for in this year's budget to complete that road, so. And then the cabin also, so.
Yeah, and the cabin.
No questions on that, we'll have. If there's no questions on that, we can add that for vote, or I guess reading.
First reading.
Yeah, first reading.
As we work this, or councilman.
Council.
All right, Chance.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have, we're going to do updates with our department heads. I'm actually going to ask our fire chief to go first. That way, Chief Cross don't have to sit down and go back. Jamie, you want to come up first?
Hey, Chief.
Morning, morning or afternoon, sorry.
So I've asked the chief to come and kind of give us a briefing, kind of an update about some of our fire runs and some residential and commercial inspections, so. Chief, you just tell me when you need to.
All right, you can go ahead. First, what you're seeing up there is basically a graph of our runs from January one.
Hey, Jamie, pull it just a little bit closer.
January one till now. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So right now, we're at 528 incidents. And I gave you guys a document that basically breaks down this pie graph. So it's a better understanding of what, because you see a lot of EMS calls on there, and I've already had some questions on that, so. But it breaks that down a little bit further, so you got a better understanding. It's not totally just EMS runs. It breaks it down.
What color are the EMS runs?
It's the gray, the majority of them, ones that we're making, so. If you look at what I, what I actually gave you, it actually, it's like fifty-four percent of the runs, but it actually, it's car accidents, so you're looking at things with entrapment, regular car accidents, all the way to a missing person, that sort of thing. So it breaks it down in that, in that sheet that I had actually given you, so. So if you want to take a look at that. The other, the other thing is that's actually made the, let me give back one, sorry. Actually, yeah, actually, the majority of the calls are false alarms. So we get a lot of, a lot of those also.
I think that's twenty-three percent.
That's much better than an act of fire, I'll take it.
Yes, it is. We'll take those, we'll take those over the others, especially in the heat that we're getting, so. So, but if anybody's got any questions over that, I'd be more than happy to.
And this is since January?
Yeah, since January one. No? Good? All right. The next breaks down into our inspection side. So we're at residential inspections, and then I broke them down into commercial inspections. Residential inspections are more so what Ron's doing, and then our commercial inspections is what Tommy's doing. Sometimes they intertwine, but most of the time, we're trying to keep them as, as most separate as we can, so.
Can you give us a copy of that?
No, well, actually, I didn't want to kill a bunch of trees, so there's some coming down the road here. So, so as they, did you pass those down?
Yeah, we got these.
Okay. Yeah, I gave you some other ones, too.
The residential inspections, there's an event that has to trigger that?
Yes, yes. Most of the time, it's a, it's a complaint of some sort. Now, these aren't the re-inspections, so you see in nine hundred and thirty-nine, that's actual, physical, somebody's calling the station and actually complaining.
That's like a CO detector, maybe need to check.
No, 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 no. This is just inspections. This is code enforcement style.
Oh, code enforcement.
Grass cuttings, trash, you know, that, that sort of stuff, so. So that's what you're seeing with the nine hundred and thirty-nine. So that's just basically what Ron's been doing. And like I said, sometimes he goes over into the commercial side, too, so. So I just wanted to break them up to show you what type of residential call, how many residential calls we're getting complaint-wise compared to the commercial side, so. So.
Now, you really can't read that.
So he's, he's, his violations that he's written is about 1,729 violations. That's, that's quite a bit.
Since January?
Since January one. We have gotten a lot stricter on, on citations, so we're seeing a lot more of those. We're starting to issue more and more and more. So just trying to get compliance. And, and like I said, that nine thirty-nine is not, not nearly with, with what Ron does on rescheduling and going back out and doing that sort of thing, so. On the commercial side, 232 for Tommy. So he's wrote violation-wise, 1,323 on the violation side for Tommy, so. So, yeah, it's a lot since January for, for just two individuals. I mean, and you still, like I said, the re-checks, the, a lot of the grass complaints now, we're, we'll get a grass complaint instead of somebody going out and actually seeing the grass, we're actually just sending a letter saying, hey, we got a complaint that your grass is high. Tom, and then Ron will go back out probably three or four days later. If the grass is high, we write that, we'll write the citation down. Just go ahead and do it. So we're trying to, to obviously, you know, work with what we got, try and do a little bit better and manage our time better, so.
And the violations, do they result in fines, or?
Sometimes. It just depends. Yeah, I mean, I could.
You don't know how many resulted in fines.
No, I didn't, I didn't pull that up, so I was, I was limited on what I was, what I was doing, was trying to get some other stuff done, too, but.
What's the smoke alarm installs?
That is, well, we'll start from, can I start from the RV inspection?
Please.
Okay. The RV inspections is something we started probably about three years ago. The state actually requires the RV, anything out of the state that comes into the state, a B-seal, which is, was, was done actually by the Fire Marshal Office, then it's turned over to the Housing Department now, so. But we actually took a class with a guy, and he, obviously, he was the only one in the state that was actually doing these RV inspections. He was two and three months out. So now that we start doing, we're getting people from Louisville, Meade County, all the way around us, bringing their RVs to the station. If it's in the city limits, the guys go out and do the RV inspections. If it's outside the city limits, they have to come here. Uh-huh. We charge sixty dollars. The state gets their half, and then we get the remainder. It's like thirty-five dollars. And I think, once that paper goes around, what was, what was the quote there?
I just need a copy of that paper.
What was, what was the quote there? The final sixteen hundred and?
Sixteen hundred and forty-some dollars.
Yeah, so sixteen hundred and forty-some dollars is what we've generated just off of doing an RV inspection. So we buy the seals from the state, so the state gets their side, and then we're, we're making ours, so. Car seat installs, a lot of the guys that, with the police department, some of our guys are actually certified to, to do the car seat installs, and they have to do so many a year and that sort of thing, so. So sometimes they'll set up at Walmart or do whatever. They'll have big, open things for car seat inspections and that sort of thing, so. So there's twenty-one this year so far, and I think they're getting ready to do another big, a big, what do you call it? Lost for words.
Event.
Yeah, event. There you go. Thank you. So another event coming up here sooner or later, I think, I'm not really sure where it's at. I forget what Tommy, but. So they'll be doing that, so you'll see that number pop up. But once again, that's, that's from, and those take sometimes twenty minutes to an hour to do for one, one install. So they want to make sure it's right and that sort of thing. And then, and then the smoke alarm installs, 274. The Red Cross came in, what boosted that numbers up so, so much this year is the Red Cross got a grant, and they came around and said, hey, would you all mind helping us? So I sent both crews out, and they went into certain areas, I think it was some of the mobile home parks, and actually installed on a Saturday the smoke alarm, so. All donated smoke line, grant money, and they went in and installed, so.
Were they wired or?
No, it's all battery. These are all battery, but they're ten years, so, so they last. We always want that battery backup, but most of them don't even have one, so we'd rather them have something than nothing, so.
Any questions?
And we can get copies of that other stuff if you guys want, or I can just email it to you. So.
Can Barbara just keep that one?
Barbara can have that one, too, yeah.
Yeah, she took mine. I'll need a copy of it.
But he'll do email.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for a very detailed report. I appreciate that.
Oh, well, thank you.
Jamie, you know, in your line of business, red means fire, which is bad.
Yes, I know. Can we go to a different color?
Well, you can't, you can't read the red and black. It's really hard to read.
It's a red thing.
It's a bad thing.
All right, Chief. You want to come up? All right, Chief. All right, Chief Cross, you.
All right. I think you all have a copy of these stamps before here.
You got a PowerPoint?
No, I'm old.
He's like younger.
Jamie Becker, smile for me.
This is a, these are not all the calls that we do, but it's the ones we do pretty much every day. Start over on your left column where the calls for service are. Those are all the calls that come into RPD that we send out an officer on. And last year, you can see, we had 28,422 of those.
Hey, Jeff, pull that mic over to you.
In the same time period or the whole year?
No, that was for the whole year. That was for a whole year. The number above that, fourteen, three forty-eight, is what you see through seven months of this year. So we're a little bit lower than, if that trend continues, then we may wind up, you know, maybe 3,000 calls for service less than what we had last year, if that trend continues.
Which, again, is good if you don't get too many calls.
Yeah.
Means everybody's happy and safe.
Well, right now, you're on a pace to be ahead of that, I think, yeah.
No, that's for seven months. If you take July off, that number of 14,348 will go down by 2,192. So that's what I was saying. We, we're seven months into this instead of halfway through, so I just wanted to clarify that so that we, kind of give us an indication of where we're at, at the six-month time. Nine one one calls, obviously, you see that there, that we've had 2,732 so far this year. Traffic citations, you can see we've surpassed la, all of last year's total, seven months through this year. So the officers have written a lot more citations where last year, you know, they, they may have written the warnings for last year, for instance. That traffic written, that means a written warning. Five eighty-two over five sixty-one for last year, that's even up over last year. So the guys have spent a lot more time this year enforcing traffic, to this point, as you can see. And then there's also the verbal warning category, where you can see there, last year's total was 1088, and it's 764 so far this year. So those are, those are pretty much on track. Traffic collisions, non-injury collisions, about on, you know, close to average, I guess, for what we normally do. The injury accidents, you know, is, is better than it was. That's through seven months a year. We're not even halfway there to that 112 total, so that's a little bit better. And then obviously, got your hit and runs over there. All these other numbers that you see for alarms, the bank alarms, the business alarms, and family disturbances, loud music calls, for instance, kind of explains where we're at through seven months of this year compared to last year's totals.
Adult arrests.
Yes, the adult arrests are eight eleven through seven months, again, if that's any indication. If you take 123 off of that, you know, we're back down to 700 range, so that's down a little bit, too. Can't say it'll stay that way for the rest of the year, but that's where we're at right now. One thing I want to show you down here.
And Chief, are your juvenile arrests all community, or are some of these school-related?
I would have to look and see how many of those are school-related. I, I don't. I would, and I don't know for sure, but when I looked that up, I wouldn't guess that the school-related is probably not as many. It won't be that high, I don't think. That occurred at the school, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that fifty, is that both community and school-related arrest?
Yes, that's total. That's, that's everything, yeah. But I would, the school-related arrests are probably, you know, not as near as many as what, you know, someone might think, that we got a lot of kids in school acting up. I don't think that's the case.
Okay.
I think that number's going to be relatively low.
Can you hit that? Most of the issue.
Yeah, I can, I can check it and see what that is.
What do you think most of the issue is that we have so many of them being arrested?
The juveniles? Well, you know.
I don't think that's too bad.
It's difficult to say what the issue is. I mean, I have to go back and look at every report and see what they did to be charged. Most, most of those, for instance, you go back and look at January, and it's, it's really low. And then you get up in the warmer months, and it starts going up, with the exception of, of June, there's kind of a out of the ordinary.
They were all on vacation.
And through the warmer months, they're out of school, you know, they're, they tend to get out and not have anything to do, you know, running, running out of ideas, and they, you know, just usually just minor issues, you know. Not a lot of major stuff, but sometimes it happens, and, but I can pull those and see exactly what they're, I'd have to, before I could even tell you what they're for. But like I said, it's not unusual to see the warmer months increase. One thing I'll point out to you is those phone totals that you see on the very left side at the bottom, those are the total number of phone calls that come into RPD every year. For instance, 28,364 for seven months of this year versus 56,390. So that's pretty, you know, going to be pretty much on average, what we're going to see at the end of the year, I'd say. One number that you'll see over there, radio traffic frequency, that is the number of radio communications that we have back and forth between the police and dispatch. So last year was right at 200,000. So we stay, you know, pretty active. And that doesn't mean that somebody calling something bad, maybe officers making traffic stops or calling to go to lunch when they call out of the radio. That's just how many total transactions occur over the radio.
Chief Cross? I don't see any nine one one calls. Are they in the total calls, or what did we get through Harden County?
Let me see where you're talking. Second call.
Oh, way at the top. They're not down with the other calls, okay?
That's your nine one one right there.
What's the 4477?
So those are separate?
Yes, yes. The 4477, Barbara, let me clarify. I'm, I'm almost 100% sure that that's correct, yes.
That there's additional calls?
I'll check with Jeff Hale to make sure that that's, if that reflects in the totals or not. I'm sorry, what was that question?
With the 4477, 4470, what are those?
Yeah, the 4477 is, is the number that we like for people to call in on that may have a police emergency, but it's not a nine one one level emergency. If you just want to call RPD direct, like our 4479 number is just the administration number that comes back to the, to the, to my office and, you know, the captain's offices. We have a number, 5147 is for the detectives, and so we like for people to use 4477, 4470, 4478. Those three numbers are the, you know, primary numbers that we receive our calls. And then the 4481 is usually a general conversation, call for patrol or, you know, outside of the administration's office.
So if you had a traffic accident and you had to look for your accident report, but you needed to contact the officer, it would show up, that type of phone call, if I had to check with the officer for something, that would show up on one of these other numbers, right? Is that what you're saying?
It could show up on any of them, depending on which one. We can't dictate which one they call in on, but.
Right, but I mean, it's, it's a lot of those type of calls, too.
Yes, yes. 4481 is.
General information.
Yeah, 4481, we don't advertise as our emergency number. It's 4478, 4470, 4477. And then obviously, nine one one, if you. And I know a lot of people don't know this, but when you call nine one one, it goes down to control initially. And then they ring it down to us or whichever agency's jurisdiction it occurs in.
So if you see a wreck, you dial 4477, police is going to get there quicker.
Because you're talking right to the dispatcher.
Yeah, but the only thing about that is, is, is when you call that nine one one number, you're going to, if it's, like if it's an injury accident, you're going to get both the ambulance and the police at the same time, so. You know, we don't discourage anybody from calling.
It's better to call nine one one, isn't it, for an accident?
Yeah.
Any questions on the stats for Chief?
Nope, sounds like y'all been busy.
But not as busy as we were last year. That's good, right?
Down a little bit.
That is good. And you've been able to do more community relations with popsicles and things, so it's all good?
Yeah. We like to do those things.
All right. Then, Chief, since you're sitting there, we're just going to go on to the next one.
Still got some else for him.
You have some amendments to the, number three, it's amendments to the police policies and procedures.
Yeah, I have some policies and procedures that we passed out to you that I'd like to get approved next week if we could. Score those. Maybe I'll chance in the next few days to take a look at those. Any questions? Feel free to, feel free to call me.
And then this Jack, great.
Yes, we also have just received notice. Yes, we, we also have just received notice last week that we are getting a, uh, receiving our JAG grant again this year. And I think it's ten thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. And that's a shared grant with the sheriff's office and we're going to give them twenty-five hundred of it. So, I think it leaves us about eight thousand, forty, hundred and forty-one dollars or something like that. Ashley might have the total there.
Eight thousand, one hundred and forty-six.
Four, one hundred and forty-six.
Yeah, we put that on your, we got that just a little while ago, so we put that, it wasn't in your packet, but we put it on your, on your desk.
And you're going to use that to buy weapons?
Yes, that, well, we won't get to buy all of them with it, but remember I talked to y'all a while back, the budget time that we needed to buy weapons and we didn't get the budget money for that, but, uh, we'll try to come up with enough to get that done. I think we will without question and this helps tremendously.
Mm-hmm.
So, the officers don't have the supply of their own weapons anymore?
No, we haven't, yeah, we, we, when I got hired in ninety-three, we did. But it wasn't too far along after that that the city started buying all the weapons.
We just auction off the old ones?
No, we have to trade them into, to keisters where we, where we buy the new ones from. That's primarily the dealer we use for our weapons purchases. And they give us credit, uh, for those weapons, which is, helps out tremendously. And they, they, they're pretty, pretty fair with their pricing that they give us for their used weapons. Like I said, our weapons are thirteen years old now. It's time to get them swapped in and.
And they're being carried almost daily, that's the other thing.
Yes.
It's not like when you have in your gun safe that you get out three or four times a year. This is in the holster, in the car, out of the car. Gets a little banged around.
And, and firing range, too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff, are you there before you leave?
Anybody have any other questions on the grant?
Nope.
Um.
What's the timeframe of the grant?
Uh, we got to have it done in a couple of weeks. I don't know, they, and they, you know, typically they've, last couple of years, there's been a tight, tight window, time they notify us till the time we.
Right, that's.
Had to get it done.
But next week's good.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Barbara, you have anything else?
Nope.
Anybody else? Grant, no? Uh, I'm going to ask you about the surplus, Jeff, while you're still here. If y'all had time to look over your surplus items, uh, RPD had a surplus list. Uh, I guess you've got almost several pages. A couple cruisers, surplus cruisers.
Yes, there's, we've condensed that down a little bit, too, so it'll help. Ashley and I worked on it today, so.
Uh, can you explain to me what a half dummy is versus a full dummy? Did you say it first?
Half dummy?
You've got a half dummy, not a full dummy.
It's on a stand and it, it's a dummy from the waist up. Don't have any legs on it.
What do you do with it?
Is he used for?
They, uh, used, they used to use it for, uh, uh, our pepper ball guns when we shoot.
I'm thinking it's CPR.
It's, it's been, no, it's been, uh, punched and kicked and, and powdered and.
He's ready to retire, is that what you're saying?
Time for him to go to the house.
What happened to Mercedes bikes, it's still back there?
Yeah, we still got that.
It's still hanging up?
I didn't read it.
It ain't surplus yet, it, it, it.
I got a secret bid already to bid on that.
You going to leave the blue lights on it? The sirene?
Uh, and then, Jeff, you had, let's see there, what I did, I just had it, cruisers?
Yes.
You had three cruisers and most there.
We got, um, I think a Ford Explorer that we've had two thousand, since two thousand and three. And that was a, a grant vehicle that was bought back when we got a traffic grant many years ago. And it's, it's seen its better days and, uh, served a great purpose. I think we've put a couple of transmissions in that thing over the years.
Yeah. Um.
The Taurus is the white one.
And then the white Taurus is, it's about.
That, that was bought for the Challenger Center.
The oh-five? No, the Taurus, the ninety-nine?
Yeah, and we've driven it for a long time and it's, it's, it's had it also. And I think we had, we got it, maybe on the other list that you got actually there.
Oh-five Crown Vic Ford?
Yeah.
Where's that one?
Sounds right. It's a cruiser, was a cruiser.
It's always a cruiser?
Oh, yes.
And then you got a oh-six Chevy Tahoe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to look at those, those vehicles are sitting outside a public works garage up there. And they're, and there's also a ni- uh, a Explorer or an Explorer Expedition that was, I think, one Bryce drove for a long time. And then I think we gave that one to the, to the fire department. Yeah, the fire department got the other one, yeah.
When will we be ordering the new one?
So, you also have an expedition?
We talked about this the other day and, and really soon, probably in the next couple of weeks or so. He was waiting on some state contract numbers to come back, I think.
Yeah, the new prices that came out.
And how many cruisers are we getting added, actually?
You put three, three.
Three cruisers and then there's some admin vehicles in there or?
Those are in there. We got the ones we switched, the his and mine.
Yeah.
Those are including them, the three?
No, no, that was not.
So, actually three.
The one I had from, it was from last year's budget.
Right.
Mine, and then that went to Mark, the patrol commander, to replace the truck that we gave Tim.
So, so actually three patrol officers will be getting new vehicles?
Yes, yes. Yeah, 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 sorry.
So, Mayor, did you say there's also an expedition, expedition?
That's under the other, it's on the fire department.
Oh, different department.
So, once we get these new cruisers, what's our fleet going to look like? Decent shape?
It's getting better. Um, I mean, obviously, we still got cruisers that are aged. And every year, you know, you got some that are, that are aging and you just have to.
Are all the Tahos going to be gone?
All the Tahos are gone. They're, they're replaced with these, basically, these three that are coming in. Will replace, no, I'm sorry. Um, yes.
Yeah, they're all gone. Yeah, and we, we kept two, that's why there's only one. We kept two, one's going to, uh, Tim's department and the other one's the public works. And then the one that was the worst of the bunch is on the list. Anything else for surplus?
Thank you, good. Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
There, you know, on your one page, on the front page of your, uh, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen surplus list, if you'll go down in the middle, there's one that's supposed to, shouldn't have been on there, and that was a two thousand red Ford Taurus. That was the, uh, planning vehicle that Murray drove. Um, we're actually giving that to the police department to replace the white Taurus. We had actually thought about surplus and then.
Oh, on the admin list.
Yeah, on the admin list. Um, one of the, it's, they wanted to keep it as a gopher car around town. It only has a couple, maybe forty thousand miles, but it has that many, maybe not even that much. But they've decided to keep that, and so that comes off that list. Barbara, you had, you had asked a question.
Are we doing all of, all of them now?
Yeah, if there's any questions on one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed your, your thing on it. Um, the question I had is back on the recreation list. We have two portable basketball goals. And we also had, uh, foot, the foosball table and the air hockey table that we used back when we had, um, a recreation room at Calvin. And I would, I would like to see us redo, try to redo that recreational program again. Everything I hear in town is, the city doesn't do anything for the children, we don't do anything for the youth. Uh, we have a different administration now. I think maybe we could have a better, have it work out a little better than what maybe it has in the past. So, I would like to take those off of there and see if we couldn't use them in that, in that capacity to help the community.
Tim, how's the table, how's both tables?
What I was told, I might actually look at, what I was told, they were, the foosball table, there's something wrong with, it didn't work right or something. And then the, uh, air hockey table, the controller has gone out on it, so it doesn't, the air doesn't blow on it.
Oh, so the air's out, now you got to have that.
Yeah.
Is, are they simple, is it, have you looked up to see if it's a simple fix or is it that system's?
I've worked on the air hockey table a couple of times and I couldn't fix it the last time.
So, the air's out of that?
That's though it was one of them, there was military stuff that we acquired at one point, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And what's the portable basketball goals? You and I, I'd asked you about those, but they were in the back.
They've been over in the garage over at, at Dalton Park for a year, Simpson, and it's just pieces. Ground is not a full set, the way I understand it.
Because see, when I read this, it just says two portable basketball goals. It doesn't tell me.
Yeah.
I'm assuming they're good when I read this, because I don't know.
From what I was told, they're, they're not all there.
We can't get one out of it?
I can look at it, find out.
What would be the intention, uh, we, do we still have basketball goals right behind City Hall, right? What would you want to do with it?
Oh, you can always use an extra basketball goal. Kids are always looking for another place to play.
And most, most of the stuff on a surplus list is usually stuff that's kind of had its fair share of, of time. I mean, on most of it.
Hey, I'm just, I just hate if there's something that's, you know, everything, it always sells. I'd just like to see us be able to do something for the youth, for the kids, if possible.
Uh, so, the two, you're okay then, or are you making a recommendation, Ms. Baker, on the foosball and air hockey?
Well, I have to, I'll take a look at them and see.
Then you want to let us know next council meet?
That'd be great.
And I'm sure Tim will be accommodating to take you over here and let you look at those.
I'm sure he will.
Anybody else have any questions on anything else y'all saw? Councilman? No, all good?
I have a question, Chief, uh, Mayor. The projector screen that they have on there, on the admin, do you want to size it up?
I don't, we can find out. You want to see what it is?
Yes.
All right, Ashley, if you have enough to.
I'll take care of it, I'll send that to you now.
Thank you.
These TVs, I'm assuming, Tim, these TVs are the old box, old school, because they're, they're twenty-seven inch and they're twenty-seven inch.
Yeah, it's a big old box downstairs.
Yeah, I've got about thirteen of them I'm trying to get rid of from Bingo and I can't, I can't give them away. Good boy won't even take them.
Last time I had to get rid of them.
It will if you go there after hours.
Move your mic up that way. They, uh, okay, but is there anything else you all see? Mr. Pike, you got an exercise bike?
Right up your alley. I could save the same for you, Mayor.
All right, if there's nothing else.
It's a shorter one.
All right, if there's nothing on the surplus list, uh, reservicing bid came in last, they opened it up last Friday. Uh, and y'all should have that bid in front of you with the, uh, bid list, the people that were present during the bid opening. Uh, and so, that's just what their bid came to, total low bid.
Why's the price per ton so high for the walking trails? Just because it's harder for them to get to?
Yeah, I think so, it's narrower and it's just probably the way they have to lay it. But I think it went up about four dollars from last year. Now, they did do one of the walking trail, the, uh, down on the, the farthest one in the Song Basin. They're going to do it for last year's price, so. So, five hundred and nine thousand's pretty good. Probably the second highest we've done in a while. Any questions on that? If not, we'll put that on.
About, okay, we're going for the high bid?
Huh?
That's the high bid, Chief.
That's, that's all we. Yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess you look at it that way.
Some told us that it was a low bid.
Low bid, no.
It's a low, too.
Yeah. All right, that being said, uh, mayor council comments, Ms. Baker, you want to start?
Uh, the only thing, but you're going to touch on that, the parade, so you can cover that.
Is that it? Mr. Root?
Well, tomorrow, August the thirteenth at twelve o'clock is the RSBA luncheon. Our very own Mayor J.J. Duval will be the guest speaker for the luncheon.
Maybe.
Maybe?
Maybe, not much. Maybe sick of it.
Can't bail at the last minute. So, please come out and join us for that. Um, on September the fourteenth, we are hosting our first annual Radcliffe Cultural Festival. So, uh, we invite everyone to come out and participate. Um, if you have a culture that you would like to represent, we are still, we still have openings for you to participate with that. We're looking for, uh, dance activities, arts and crafts, food, anything that's related to culture. So, please come out and join us. If you're not participating from that aspect, we invite everyone to come out and join us, uh, to see what all we have to offer. So, September the fourteenth, um, come out and join us.
Ms. Paul?
Gospin and Park every Sunday evening in September. You should have all gotten a text message requesting donations.
Yes, sir, I did get that.
He pauses for affirmation that checks are forthcoming, but no one is ready to commit. But, um, every year, we do Gospin and Park, great community.
Councilman Palmer, I'll give you a hundred dollars.
All right.
Bring it, pass it down.
I got a hundred on this thing, I get two hundred.
All right.
All right, um.
What time is it?
Free food, free music. Uh, we invite churches as far as global, come all over the area to come out and perform, any group that has something that they want to do with. Welcome them to come out. We sit on the hillside, take over the amphitheater every Sunday evening.
City Park North.
Yep, City Park North, great opportunity to sit out, listen to some music, enjoy the sunset and, uh, have some free refreshments. So, every Sunday evening at six o'clock.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Eighteen hundred.
She keeps saying, what time? He keeps saying.
Eighteen hundred, six o'clock. In the evening, in the evening, on Sunday.
Oh, my God.
Every Sunday evening, September, six o'clock.
And you all have food and stuff, that's great, nice.
And we give out free food, there's a hot dog night, there's a, um, nacho night, they do different.
Steak night?
Yep, ice cream, we just have a ball, so come on out, enjoy the park, enjoy the music, we sit on the hillside at the sunset.
I always give you a hundred.
And it's totally free.
So, you got two hundred already?
Two hundred, right here.
You got three.
Three, three hundred, all right.
Well, I'm glad y'all got that covered for us.
He's contemplating.
He'll call me separately because it's so big.
I'm thinking about that exercise.
He's saving his money for a circus.
Take back your health. Not even.
Yeah, I do, no, I do, I do got some, I do. Um, so, this week, we have the, um, no, it's not even this week, I'm sorry. Want to thank, uh, Beast Mode, they said, congratulations, their, um, the annual, the end of the year celebration was yesterday at Saunders Springs and it was hot. And, um, but it was, it was wonderful to be able to celebrate with them. They had a lot of academic achievements and, uh, we, we celebrate them and they sent, um, some information for me to send back and I'll make sure that Ashley gets it. Uh, Family Fun, congratulations on being best ice cream in, in the state of Kentucky, that's awesome. Between them and Sweet Shop, I thought that was amazing. Um, eight-twenty, mark your calendars, the Chamber Breakfast will be taking place in Vine Grove this particular, uh, meeting and it'll start at eight AM. On nine nineteen at the Calvin Community Center is the Entrepreneurship Academy, the inaugural graduation. So, uh, Mayor Duval is super excited to be a part of that and everyone is invited to attend. Um, entrepreneurs have attended a nine-month course here in our community and three of the, of the graduates have actually opened up brick and mortar since the classes started this year, so we're very excited about that, in, in Radcliffe. In Radcliffe, yes, our city, write that down, Ben. And, um, nine twenty-one, Harden County NAACP will be hosting their annual Freedom Fund banquet, the twenty-eighth year. Uh, guest speaker Roland Martin will be in attendance, uh, will be taking place at Sadowski Field House. And that's all I have.
You should put them in an email, send it out.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to go laugh.
Can we go ahead?
Just email him, that's all.
You want me to email him?
That'll be good. Alright, real quick, you guys mostly have touched on it. Radcliffe Days Parade is, I just put some old pictures up from what we had before. This is when Greg and Holly were our grand marshals, just where we went down Dixie several years ago. This is when we had our pageant, we had our, our Ms. Radcliffe, I think she was the third or fourth one that, this, this time.
Third, I think.
Third, yeah. This is where we came down Dixie, kinda like how we used to do years ago. This is kinda where we started and went up towards, so in this case, we're gonna be reversing, Pam, just, yeah, so we'll be coming from Severn, or Stiffin, excuse me, and coming down thirty-one and ending in Holly's parking lot there, so. If you want to sign up or wanna participate, I mean, in the years past, we've had about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty participants. So, we hoped, you know, this is new again, so we hope to get that number. I think Ed, you guys, when did you and Barbara and Terry do that last one? Was that, that's probably the last one we had, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Three, so...
We had a tank, so let's see if we can pop a tank.
See if I can get a Apache to...
That'd be good, fly.
Are we doing one float for the council or we doing?
Yes, we're doing one, yeah. We'll have a float for the council. But we do allow candy, we do allow for people to throw candy, it's just something, Mike Pike just keeps quiet, don't say a word. But we like to have people throw candy, so just make sure you throw the candy and have walkers on the side, you know, to make sure that, you know, something. So, we want the banks, all the sport leagues, football leagues, or schools, or bands, so we're working on that. If you want to participate, you can go to our website. The city website has the link and the applications for the parade and the parade rules. And then, as Pam just talked about, the Radcliffe Cultural Festival will be immediately following that. We figure it'll be about noon when that starts. Our parade starts at ten, festival will probably start some shortly after that. Well, there'll be a lot of people there, so, yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, we're gonna have a variety of activities, performances, music, dance, different things, so it should be a nice event.
And so, you, if you wanna find out more information on the festival, that's not loading, here it is. Not trusted, that's not supposed to happen?
Do we have the festival website?
I don't know what's going on.
Tim, we need you.
I'll just leave it there. Yeah, either way, you can go to their website at www.facebook.com backslash celebrate Radcliffe diversity, and that will take you to the website to give you all the information you need and updates that they have going on. So, again, Radcliffe Parade, September fourteenth, and Optimus Club... Yeah, I'll put that in email, Tim. Optimus Club is also, I talked to Denise today, and they, they're probably gonna be doing the pancake breakfast back at Calvin from seven to nine.
That morning?
We always, that's what we did last time. We always had a pancake breakfast.
The city's always done the parade and the pancake breakfast.
Yeah, so Optimus Club usually does it for us. So, they'll have that back at Calvin, and so, it's a long day. It's a long, long day. But yeah, for more information, you check out the websites and check out Radcliffe. So, with that being said, I don't have anything else. You guys good?
Oh, I did have one thing, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
It was really cool to see all of the council out, first day of school. We had a good time. For those who got a chance to go out there, it was really, really fun to go to different schools and showing that posted on Facebook. It was really nice to see that.
Yeah, I showed up late, Kim and I. I got there for the last few minutes. Yeah, you got there on time, I got there late.
Yeah, but, yeah, the village stood up, so that's, that's a good thing, so we appreciate that.
Well, everything so far as I know, Harden County School's had a great start, so...
Yep, like to wish everybody a good school year.
Alright, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. I'll see you all August twentieth for our next meeting at six-thirty, regular scheduled council meeting, and that will be, unless something, big hiccup happens, that'll be our Tiff District meeting, so.